We're recording.
We're recording.
We're recording.
Okay, 4:30 or a little after 4:30, can we do a roll call?
Aaron Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Petty.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Moss is absent this evening. Commissioner Milphy.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. First item, we had an update in the, or a correction in the agenda. So I think we need to make a motion to approve the new agenda. Is that correct? Or just take notice if we had some couple of corrections in the agenda item for the pre-development that need to be moved. One other item. And we'll see a couple that have been taken off. So it's been an updated agenda. So with that, I want to verify, has it, all the notices were done correctly as far as the city notices?
Correct.
Okay. And we want to remind all the commissioners if you had any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest to identify that at the time of the application. With that, we got first item would be to review and approve the minutes. We had November, December, and February minutes into the packet. Is there any questions, concerns, additions? Anything missing on those? Not moving for any motion?
Make a motion that we approve November, December, and February, November 2024, December 2024, and February 2025 minutes.
Second up, you have a motion and a second to approve three months of minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. All right, we'll move on to the preliminary development plan. We have a pre-plan for 1240 Bitterroot, the city of McCall.
I have tonight also with us Wayne Ruble, our design architect for the project. So I'm just, I downloaded your packet. It took a little bit to get it downloaded. But hopefully you've got some information in here that we submitted to Meredith a few weeks ago. And what page does that start on, Meredith?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Okay, great. Okay, so a quick overview, back in May of 2024, the city had a bond election for the city of McCall to take out up to $16.5 million in debt. That bond passed by a measure of 80% in favor. So what that meant was critical and necessary water infrastructure for our water system needs to be completed in the next two to four years. There's two large projects. One's a water storage tank project that's happening east of the, of the city. And then the second, which is kind of the two-thirds of the funding, is improvements to the water treatment plant that's some located kind of in between Spring Mountain Ranch and Aspen Ridge. So that water treatment plant's been there for a little over 20 years, and it served us very well. It was designed to have some expansion to the north with its filters. And this project consists of exactly that, expanding the filter capacity of our system, as well as expanding the clear well. And the clear well is a large basin where chlorine reacts with the treated water to ensure we can deliver to the distribution system. So effectively doubling the capacity of our system, but also providing redundancy in that we can operate up to three filters with one offline with a total of four filters, whereas today we only have two. And we really have no opportunity to do any maintenance on those filters, particularly during the summer when we have high irrigation use and high demand. The last component to the project is a storage facility, which is shown in the site plan, and I will share screens with you since I'm on the meeting now. And bring that up. So quick little site plan, this is the existing condition here. And then some additional work, here's a proposed development. So the filter expansion happening where my cursor is going right now, just to the north of the existing facility. And the plant was somewhat designed for that, and there's a tremendous amount of piping improvements. Then this is the clear well that is going to be expanded to our additional clear well so that we can push more water into this system faster because you need a specific contact time. And this is just not large enough if we increase the volume. And then this structure over here is a storage facility. It's mostly like a garage. It will have some heated space. And it will be built into the landscape to somewhat be functional so that we don't have to, so it'll, it'll match grade with our existing driveway, but it also fits into the landscape better as a little bit more benign to the, to the passerby. And I'm trying to think, a lot of the drawings that you have in here are a lot of technical piping components. And the reason that we included that is that these are essential public facilities. This treatment plant is in this location because the city decided to put it there. It was a strategic location. And we're trying to maximize this, this property. It's, it's not cost effective to relocate this water treatment plant or to build another treatment plant somewhere else. In the next 20 years, we may likely be building another treatment plant or a well system somewhere else within the city. But we need to utilize this property to the maximum extent possible to keep water rates as affordable as possible. So what we learned as we went through this process is that the city never issued itself a conditional use permit. And your current city code, your, your land code, land use code, requires a conditional use permit for a water treatment facility in any zone. Doesn't matter if it's a civic zone, residential zone, or whatever. So we also identified that this parcel and its use is best associated with the civic use. It's a publicly owned piece of property. It has a specific water treatment facility, and that best aligns with civic uses. And so what you're seeing in our land use application is an application for conditional use permit. I think that accompanies a design review and then also a rezone application. That's the base, basic summary. We've been working aggressively over the past month to put together our land use applications. We'll be submitting that to Meredith by the end of next week. We'll have grading plans, landscaping plans, better architectural renderings of what things are going to look like. But principally, we're trying to match the existing architecture of the building. We'll be doing some small improvements, new paint, some of the old, older boards, lumber will be being replaced. And we do have some roof extension. There's a roof extension, and I'll zoom in here. Whoops. Is there? Okay. This hatched area here is a roof extension specifically just to provide covered storage. When we get a call on Christmas night or Christmas Eve that we have a water main break, and there's snow falling, all of our vehicles are stored outside, and so that's not ideal. This covered storage will allow us to have our vehicles undercover. We'll be able to have some vehicles stored in here, some certain equipment. So the purpose of this roof extension is really just for worker safety functionality in the winter time. And I know. Eighty-eight, we'll go to eighty-eight. Wayne, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, the one thing is that Wayne Ruble, Epic Coast Design, 303 Colorado Street here in McCall. So yeah, I wanted to bring these up because most people are probably more familiar with kind of what this building looks like from Spring Mountain Boulevard as you're driving by. And.
Bitterroot.
Oh, sorry, Bitterroot. Yeah, Spring Mountain Ranch, Spring Mountain Ranch, Bitterroot, wrong code.
Yeah.
Most of those rectangles that you saw on the site plan, most of those shapes are actually underground in the front lawn area. So really, there's this building, and then there should be one other image of that, the storage unit. So this building here, we're expanding. You can see there on the right side, most of this building is existing in this color scheme. But you can see where the roof line breaks from there to the right is a new shelter for the vehicles like Nathan mentioned.
Yeah, this is the covered, covered parking.
Yeah.
And this gray building in the back is the storage facility that's kind of built somewhat into the landscape.
Yeah.
Up above that is Majestic View Drive, and there are significant trees behind us. And we just had a meeting last week on the landscaping plan trying to identify which trees exist. We shouldn't be taking out too many trees. There's some small trees we're going to need to take out along Bitterroot Drive. And then if I go back to this rendering here, you see this roof line change right here. This portion to the left of this roof line edge is the expansion of the filters. So really trying to pack as much into the existing footprint that we have. A tremendous amount of piping improvements and rerouting of different pipes. There's a lot of expenses internally, but for the person who walks around the facility, these will be the main additions, which is this portion. And then as I go to the second, this roof extension here, and then the structure. This structure will actually be a bid alternate. So if we cannot fully fund it, this would be something that might get done in the future. But certainly in the conditional use permit, we would want to get entitlements to be able to do that.
And again, get all those, you know, there's a number of vehicles that are sitting around the site that, you know, number one, we want to get them in and out of undercover so that they are, you know, ready to go. Like you said, during a, you know, a winter emergency when you've got to, you know, get the truck out and go or the excavator, whatever. But then also just to fit in with the residential neighborhood, you know, that has similar garage requirements and stuff like that. So we just want to kind of clean it up.
An aerial photo, and you can see we've got vehicles stored kind of in an area that used to be landscaping. We've got vehicles stored over here in a flat spot on the side of the, of the driveway. These are the parking stalls that will be able to get covered, and the goal is to get all of these existing pieces of equipment undercover so that they're not exposed to the winter elements or, or the sun for that matter. But also be able to better respond to emergencies. So if we get a call in the middle of the night, we're not digging out all of our equipment. We're pulling them out of the garage or from undercover, and we can respond faster. Okay, well, that was a lot. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Nathan?
I wish you one would be screening or something of that shop building with the blank wall. But if it's built into the hillside like it looks like it's going to be, and hopefully some screening, it looks like you have the road up above it a little bit. So it's not going to be too bad for the neighbors or just, I mean, I would like to make sure that's screened as much as possible from the neighbors and.
Yeah, you can see all these trees that are here.
Yeah.
And where this is going to be located is kind of down right in this, right at this apex of this curve. So Wayne and Emily at Epic Coast will be doing some renderings to help show these things. So you'll see that in your, in the application packet. We're, we're doing our best to create, to minimize the impacts on the existing perimeter landscaping. We do have some stormwater treatment that needs to go in this corner. But these trees are kind of up on the high apex, and the stormwater treatment will be right down at the, at the edge of the road. And that new clear well will be built into this area, and as Wayne said, it'll be underground. So natural vegetation cover, we're looking at doing some adjustments to the, the landscaping directly around the treatment plant because it will be impacted by construction going to more water conservation planting approach. And so hopefully for those that drive by on Bitterroot or Majestic View, which is over here, you're really not going to know much of a difference, but certainly based on the plans, there's some significant differences that are going on there. We plan to bid this project out this July, if we get through the entitlement process okay. And construction will take two years. So 2026, 2027 is when the plant will be done. And most of that has to do with procurement of equipment. Takes about a year to get this equipment procured.
Commissioners, any other questions for Nathan? Okay.
Thank you.
I know you know who to work with.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on there. Any questions regarding either of the items on the consent agenda? And I'm open to a motion for, if there's any other items.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second up. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, hearing none, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to old business, we have design review 2024, and scenic route 2411 says a public hearing. And make a motion, we open the public hearing for this item?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Right. Is that the 450 Sampson Trail, Jeff Hatch?
Or Jeff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record. Abby Germaine with Elamun Burke, 251 East Front Street, Boise, Idaho, 83701. I'm here on behalf of the applicant who is represented by Kami Chanis and Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Also with us online is Steve Theasson, who is with Jeff's team, as well as Corinne Graham, who is the civil engineer on this project. As a housekeeping matter, I would like to have some time for rebuttal to address any questions or comments that might come up from the commission or staff or the public once I've provided the information on this. I would remind the commission of the nature of this project. So we are here seeking approval of SR 2411 and DR 2428. This is for a high-end self-storage recreational type unit facility located on Sampson Trail. As a friendly reminder to the commission, this project has already received approval from the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners approved this project for this site last year pursuant to a conditional use permit and a PUD. In providing the land use entitlement to allow this facility on the site, the Board of County Commissioners directed that the applicant come before this commission for specifically input on the design and the aesthetic aspects of this project. So that's why we're in front of you this evening. You will also recall that we were here last month on February 4th talking to you about this project. At that time, it was clear that staff and the commissioners had some questions before they approved this project. And those questions I would summarize as relating to three main topics: groundwater, stormwater, and septic facility. In addition to those topics, the commission also asked for additional renderings to illustrate how this facility would actually look on this specific site. We have provided those renderings. Those are included in your packet, and we certainly can look at those again if, if necessary. But those, those have been provided. We superimposed the actual facility onto the site. Coming back to the aspects of groundwater, stormwater, and septic, the applicant has worked, specifically Corinne, our engineer, has worked with Morgan, the city engineer, to resolve any outstanding items and questions related to groundwater. Specifically, Corinne has provided additional groundwater monitoring data, civil drawings identifying stormwater BPMs, and a narrative that describes the relationship between the finished floor levels of each building and the corresponding groundwater levels of each location. Through our correspondence with Morgan, Morgan has indicated that these addition, this additional information does meet the city's standards. There may need to be additional coordination at the building permit stage. But as it relates to the feasibility of this project on the site related to groundwater, Morgan has found that this additional information does provide, provide that. The same is true for stormwater. Again, Corinne worked with Morgan to revise and answer any comments that Morgan had on our proposed plans. This included providing an updated site grading plan as well as a stormwater management plan. Again, the feedback from Morgan was that it appears to satisfy the city's standards as it relates to stormwater. Again, may need additional coordination at building purpose, permit time. But at this point, for approvals of SRDR, that information has been provided and is sufficient. What I want to touch on briefly is the septic issue. The comments from staff and the commission at the last hearing was a question of whether or not septic was feasible at this location. And following that meeting, we had additional conversations with staff, with Morgan and Meredith, and also Central District Health on this issue. As you all are well aware, Central District Health is the entity that approves or denies septic systems on facilities like this. In speaking with Central District Health, they indicated that although we had multiple groundwater monitoring data points, test pits on the facility, we did not have one in the, in the immediate vicinity of where the septic system was planned. And therefore, at that point in time, Central District Health could not approve a septic permit for that. Based on that information and the fact that Central District Health also indicated if we wanted to do a different type of facility, we could certainly install, for example, a privy vault restroom that we could, we could pursue that, and Central District Health would provide a permit for that. With that information, we went back to the city, and we confirmed that in fact a restroom is not a requirement of this facility. We confirmed that with the city's building official. And based on that information, we revised the plans to just have a privy vault restroom on, on the site. And we removed the septic system from the facility. We also, following our conversations with Central District Health, we went and, went ahead and installed additional monitoring at that location where the septic had been planned. The hope there is that in the event that the monitoring does come back at some point in the future positively, and Central District Health does approve that, we would certainly be asking for a condition of approval that if Central District Health approves it, we would be able to, in fact, pivot to a septic system. The only reason for that is because it provides a nicer, more high-end amenity. But for today's purposes, we are going to just pursue that privy vault restroom on the facility. We, based on that information, we did actually apply and receive a vault restroom permit from Central District Health, and we have provided that to, to the city. So we, we do have every approval we need for that. That, I think, really covers the questions and comments that the commission had. I am certainly happy to answer any additional questions staff or the commission may have. Jeff is also here. Corinne is also on the line if there are technical questions. But again, we would be asking for approval of the scenic route and design review applications based on the fact that we have met the criteria and have provided additional information to answer the commissioners' outstanding questions. And with that, I'd stand for any questions you may have.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for?
I didn't see any. Where is the privy vault located? I haven't seen any updates to a plan. Can you talk about that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so the updated plans have been provided to Meredith. I believe they should be in the packet. We do have them on the, the drive, Meredith. In our presentation, they are there too. Yep, or actually just, yeah.
Oh, she's looking for that. I noticed you had drawings of some fences, a solid metal fence. Don't believe this, I don't know within this zone, I have to talk more with staff, but you talked with staff about that type of fencing?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Jeff, would you want to answer that?
Chairman Lyons and Commissioners, last fall, we worked extensively with staff. Brian Parker had us design this fence, analyze this fence, structurally calculate loading the fence with snow, and then evaluating that fence at a maximum height of eight feet with snow piling to a six-foot height along that fence. At that time, it was never mentioned that the materials that were proposed would be inadequate. But with that said, we feel that we could make a suitable fence that meets the criteria out of vinyl or, or even wood if need be. But it would definitely has more of a maintenance concern. But from a design review standpoint, we are open to additional suggestions on the actual cladding. The infrastructure be, being power coated metal would probably need to stay, but we could paint that to match any type of vinyl or wood look that the commission may find more appropriate.
Okay, well, I said more about that because I know in some other areas that especially in scenic route, that type of fencing wouldn't, wouldn't be a blue.
Does it go around three sides of the project or? Does it particular look?
Particularly where we have our snow storage areas.
They're new now.
Here's that privy vault site plan. I got sent this just before the meeting after I stopped checking emails before meetings. So I haven't a chance to look at it, but it looks like our vault object is over here.
Working with Mike Reno to get that permit, he liked the location of the septic in this location. And so with the permie permit, he wanted essentially the same solution, just in that same location.
That's also your snow storage, right?
No, that is not.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant before we go to the staff report? Okay, thanks. Right. Meredith.
I'm Abby Germaine, and Mr. Hatch described, this was originally introduced as this design review and scenic route at the February 4th public hearing for the application. It is located along the South Sampson Trail designated scenic route overlay. As they discuss the planning unit development and the conditional use permit for the property has been decided by the Val County Board of Commissioners with a set of documents outlining what we need to uncover, discover, and review for this design review and scenic route review to accompany the uses approval. In the February 4th meeting, this commission decided that you would like to see more information relating to groundwater, stormwater, building siting, and septic system feasibility, which those materials were provided by the date that staff provided the applicants to get that in for remaining on the March 4 meeting. There was correspondence with the building official relating to the conditions within the building code under which it is permissible to not require a septic connected bathroom, and one can rather use a privy system. He provided language for the circumstances under which that's possible. And so that would need to be memorialized probably within a lease agreement unless or until a plat is submitted for this project where that can be memorialized within CCNRs or the governing documents for an owners association. There's been some discussion with Bill, who's online. Our land use attorney said ultimately it's hard to enforce what people are doing, going potty or not on private property. So the inclusion of a privy vault is a logistically good idea. But I, I can't remember. I think we did see the snow storage move over there. So that would just need to be vetted for what location is appropriate to not have snow being stored on anything related to the runoff of cookies into various places. Or somebody explain to me how that doesn't happen because I need both of those knowledges. Other than that, the fencing submission, it does use entirely synthetic materials. So there would need to be a revision that includes either natural materials. natural materials or something that harnesses the design elements of natural materials like looks like wood, acts like wood, pretends it's wood, but might not be wood. Typically, we like to see fencing that allows for wildlife migrations, split rail fencing, but that doesn't really provide any screening qualities. So it's kind of this, do you want the design version or do you want the functional version? What are we doing here? It would leave that up to the commission since I've never really seen other proposals where we're holding up snow for storage using a fence versus preventing snow from going places. My mind immediately goes to like avalanche and snow breeze catching type fences that you see on mountains or highway passes that have a bit of a split in them and can handle the weight of snow, but still allow light to pass through them. But if you're wanting a fence for screening purposes, we typically require the aesthetic improvements to them using natural materials. Morgan has done review with the applicant engineer. I believe your statement is that it can meet the stormwater drainage management guidelines with bit more examples and narrative, especially in the geotechnical report where it describes how the footings work and high groundwater development such as this. But that with enough time, money and smart brains associated with it, you can typically build things. Other than that, I don't think that I have any additional updates. I think one thing that this commission discussed at the last meeting was the proximity to the scenic route. So if you want to get into those renderings that were provided where it says if you're standing in the middle of South Sampson Trail, looking at the development and including consideration in your brain for is there a version of this site plan that you would prefer? Or that you could see passing versus not passing if the site were rearranged, push the buildings further off. I know that you discussed that at the last meeting, but that's really an aesthetic discussion up to you. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
On the fence, isn't there a limit of six foot?
Yes. And then if you're within a certain number of feet of the actual street, it needs to be no taller than four.
Or that needs to be addressed. And I thought we got supposed to have like some view through it. I know there was an issue with.
That's preferred, yeah.
Not just a solid, it's not really.
Security wall. It's a wall.
I think that definitely needs to be addressed. What is the distance? I think we talked about four, but I couldn't remember. I can find it on a scenic route for the building proximity to like the boundary lines. I think normal front setbacks 20 feet, which I believe they have, but is there different with scenic route?
No, only when it's on a side property line do you utilize the minimum setback of the adjacent zone. So for example, the front setback, regardless of this being scenic route or not, the front setback, because it's to a street, is regarded as the community commercial minimum front setback. Whereas if one of the side property lines were adjacent to a residential zone, then that side property line would be required to meet whatever the residential side property minimum setback would be. So this one is greater than five feet as the minimum.
The front setback is okay at 20, even though it's a scenic?
Yeah.
Explain to me, there's been no subdivision application at this point, even though they indicate that it will be subdivided, right? So how does that flow through our approval process?
In a normal ideal world, I receive all of them at the same time. That did not occur for this one and every property retains its ability to someday subdivide if they wish to. Similar to a few months ago, we saw an existing building that did a condominium subdivision to offer the selling off of spaces. And that's existed for 20 some odd years at this point or something like that, 10 some odd maybe. So that's a pathway that's an option, but the challenge will be, or the risk will be, does the site plan and everything that's involved in this very complex property, does it comply with the subdivision standards and has it achieved the any alleviations to code that would have been necessary at the time of the FUD in order to execute the subdivision? So that is not up to me at this time, but that would be the questions that we ask later on. Bill, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
No, in terms of process, I think you're right, Meredith. I think that you know, they do retain their right to subdivide and they don't necessarily have to do it now. And so, yeah, I mean, it adds additional complexity to the situation, but you know, it's not outside of our code.
Do you have renderings of the scenic route as built? In 20 years?
These are the new ones. That tree is a little smaller. So this would be looking north. This one is looking south.
Do the elevation, well, I guess maybe for Morgan, but it seems to be below the highway. I know that's just a rendering, but do we have the ovations? What that would be, or not the highway, but Sampson Trail versus Sampson Trail, that going down below it? We have.
There is a slope downward where existing ground level is, so that's ultimately as accurate as it can be.
Commissioners, any other questions for Meredith at this time? Okay, go to engineering, Morgan.
I did provide an updated engineering review on the 26th. And I think most of my remaining comments can be finalized in the final design. As previously mentioned, I haven't issued final engineering approval for this project yet. There's still a few more things to work through in the final design. The, some of my concerns regarding the high groundwater related to the stormwater have been addressed. They talked through that with their civil engineer a little bit and looking at an updated stormwater report. They have sized the pond so that if there is high groundwater levels that exceed the elevation that they're proposing, there's still additional storage volume required for the 10-year peak. And it also has an additional six inches of freeboard. So it's six inches higher than what that water level needs to be. But it'll still maintain, it should still maintain historic rates even if the groundwater is high. And that was one of my concerns is how does that? How does the high groundwater work with your capacity of your stormwater facility? And that, that was one of my big concerns related to the high groundwater. That was most of my comment. I still, we still have a little bit of coordination to do with the neighboring property that received approval and their stormwater and how this hooks into that project. But that's again, a final engineering item in final design to make sure that they just, they match. That we don't have pipes that don't, that don't connect because that wouldn't be, that would not be a good idea. With the updated information, there was also information related to the groundwater levels and the footings and foundations as Meredith mentioned. So there have been a few like wall drains or foundation drains added. And that also connects into the stormwater system. So I think they've been accounting for some of that stormwater, that higher groundwater that we were looking at before. Let's see, what else? And I think those are the general comments. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Do you anticipate we have more information on if they're, they're running the groundwater with the water monitoring? They've done, if they'd have to build up the building pads any higher? Or that come with the final building permit or this also in the buildings aren't another two feet higher than what we're seeing? Or something like that?
That is one, I think, I believe, or I don't know if Meredith added that as a condition, but there's something. The geotechnical report should be updated to discuss high groundwater with those footings and foundations. It has a very general statement in there of like, if you find unsuitable soils, you need to over excavate it. And then generally you put in like a, a foundation drain with a sump pump to, to help keep those dry. But I would leave that to the building official and the geotech when it comes to building permit issuance on how that's going to occur for the structural integrity of those buildings.
There's something that we can, is it already in there in the conditions that, I mean, if it's all sudden the building is going to be much higher? There's no one's, but I know there was some.
Speak to if there's change in like the building height and design. Since we didn't know proximity to like the height limit or any change in height as a concern of this commission, but do that within this meeting. So currently the condition number four that I recommended states the applicant shall revise the geotechnical reports with better detail than necessary footings and foundation design based on the groundwater data and frequent frost depth, which has been noted to be greater than the usual 24 inches of the area. So if you're concerned about the height changing or the pad being built up or something of that nature, we could incorporate that. And that is prior to application for a building permit.
Commissioners, any other questions for Morgan this time?
So based on what groundwater is now, either in some areas less than a foot, what would that do as far as? Just so we know, they had to reduce foundations. How many feet more did they have to go?
I think the solution we're more often used to is like sump pumps running in crawl spaces or foundation areas.
But this is a solid pad, concrete pad, right?
So the narrative should describe, is that going to work? Or would it need to be a punked crawl space where the water flows in, flows out? Those are beyond my area of expertise. So that's why it lives in the world of John and Morgan and the building official, John Powell.
And I would rely on their geotechnical professional on how, on what specific soils they have and what groundwater they are seeing. Because that'll really play into how they design those footings and foundations for those buildings.
The expert online tonight? Nope.
Do not believe so.
All right. Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment?
Were, were there any lighting plans that were submitted with this application?
There has been quite a while ago, Tom. I still need to look at it and do all of the math relating to the outdoor lighting ordinance. But it's a still a fundamental code requirement to be in compliance with outdoor lighting ordinance. You have public comments relating to concerns about light pollution or light being cast or remaining on at odd hours of the day. So you could discuss or ask Bill Poncony if it would be reasonable to consider any conditions of approval where you can require either motion sensor lighting be involved or have all lighting turned off after a certain time period to maintain the dark skies of McCall in the neighborhood.
Again, any other questions at this point, staff? Okay, with that, we'll go to the public comment. Remind everybody you have three minutes. Please name your, or state your name and address when speaking. We do, at this point, going to make an exception for one speaker. The attorney, we have Dan Goodman. And we're going to give him a little extra time on this because he's got a presentation he'd like to give us. So at that, with that point, Dan, you ready?
Yes, thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. My name is Dan Goodman of Morrow and Fisher. We're located at 4 Ogden Avenue in Napa. And I represent Kimberly Apperson and Joe Baugh of 515 South Sampson Trail. First, I just want to say that we do appreciate the supplemental documentation that the applicant has provided. But from our view, there's still outstanding issues here that are not being adequately addressed. And it's our position that we think that at this time, it's still too preliminary to approve these applications. And in fact, we'd ask that the commission continue this hearing until the issues, which I'll discuss in a moment, and some of which has already been discussed and deliberate upon. We'd like to see those, those issues adequately addressed before the commission makes a final decision. Now, groundwater has been talked about somewhat here. And so I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want to emphasize that we have seen that there's groundwater as shallow as two inches from the surface. And it, and from the previous discussion that just took place, it's clear that there's not really an adequate explanation as to how the building foundations and footings are going to interact with that groundwater and whether there's going to be any contamination of the groundwater because of those building materials interacting directly with that groundwater. What we would have liked to have seen, especially given that this issue was discussed in great detail at the prior hearing over a month ago now, we would have liked to have seen in the prior month, this, this addressed at some point, but we still haven't. Now, I will say that, you know, if, if the septic tank that was originally proposed is no longer going to be there. Yeah, that does eliminate some of the concern here, but it doesn't eliminate the entire concern. And the staff report has made clear too that, that the plan that we've seen submitted is still preliminary in nature when it comes to addressing the groundwater issue. So I think that that's a serious concern that really keeps us from being able to move forward here. And this public hearing should be continued for that reason. And, and the other reasons that I'm about to discuss. It also came up on this note that we have footings and foundation and specifically the footings that are supposed to penetrate multiple feet below the ground. But again, we have groundwater that's certainly within that range and very close to the surface. So again, how are those footings going to interact with the groundwater? Are they going to interact with the groundwater at all? Or from what it sounds like, there's this potential that the, the buildings could be raised on larger, on thicker platforms. If that's the case, then it's really important that we see a detailed plan of how that's going to play out. Otherwise, how is the board supposed to make, how is the commission supposed to make a decision on a design review? And we still don't actually know the height of these buildings. I think though, the groundwater issue, you know, I can tell, we've talked about it a lot. Those are our concerns. So I'll move on to the, the next issue that we've identified in these updated documents. I took a look at the snow storage plan, the revised snow storage plan. McCall has a 33% minimum requirement, which again, we discussed somewhat at the last public hearing. And it looks like with their revised snow storage plan, they do meet that 33% requirement, but And it looks like with their revised snow storage plan, they do meet that thirty-three percent requirement, but barely, they're at thirty-three point two percent. And as the commission noted before. During its deliberation, it looks like there's now going to be a privy vault restroom, which again, is news to us. We've only just heard about this now, and it sounds like it's news to the commission as well. And it's our understanding that the location or the proposed location of that privy vault restroom is overlapping with snow storage. That, that's not the only place where we have an overlap of something with the location of proposed snow storage. That's gonna complicate how that storage is actually gonna take place. So we do have the privy vault restroom as one issue with regard to snow storage. But we also have, if you look at the snow storage plan, the north, I believe it's the northeasternly corner of the site. There's a portion of that corner that is designated as a snow storage as well. But if you also, if you look at the, the landscaping plan, we also see that there are significant trees to be planted at that same northeasternly corner. And McCall has in its city code, a requirement that you cannot pile snow for snow storage purposes. Against significant trees. And so given that we have a. A, a coverage here of just thirty-three point two percent. And that thirty-three point two percent number is not taking into account this privy vault restroom that we've just heard about. And it's also not taking into account, from what I can tell, that northeastern corner where we're gonna have these significant trees. Still not clear to us that the thirty-three percent requirement is actually met. In fact, it looks to us that it's missed. So if the applicant could address that more adequately and make it clear whether or not that thirty-three point two percent. Is factoring in this privy vault restroom or not, because it doesn't look like it is on the map. And whether, whether they've considered the overlap between where that significant tree. Where significant trees are supposed to be at the northeasternly corner and the snow storage at that same corner. We'd appreciate that because right now we feel that the storage unit or the, the storage, the snow storage plan is not adequate. And it's not going to work. So I'd like to see that addressed. And since it hasn't been addressed up until this time, again, we feel like it's a little too, it's, it's too premature to be approving this at this point. I'd like to see. This public hearing continued until the commission can be provided that information. Or be provided revisions to the plan to satisfy all of these requirements at once. Now, I just want to quickly move on to this decision to remove the septic tank and not have a standard restroom. You know, at first we were actually encouraged by that decision because it's our understanding that the location of the buildings. And their proximity to the scenic route frontage. That they're pushed up against that scenic route frontage because of where the septic tank was going to be. So when we heard that there wasn't gonna be a septic tank anymore, we're, we're encouraged by the idea that perhaps these buildings could be moved further back. From the scenic route frontage. Now, I know the commission had already discussed what the minimum setbacks are. But I think the, the commission should also take into account the purpose behind the scenic routes that were imposed by the city. And also the comprehensive plan and how the aesthetics of scenic routes are intended to be protected here. Just because they're meeting the minimum setback under this design does not mean that that's exactly where the building should go. Especially considering that there might be an opportunity here to move those buildings further back from that frontage, since there's not gonna be a septic tank anymore. But of course, now we're learning that there's a privy vault restroom. And I see that as a frankly, a greater concern than the septic tank. Because as you probably know from going to campgrounds, privy vault restrooms are incredibly smelly. And we didn't have this issue when we had a standard restroom being proposed and a septic tank, but now suddenly we do have this issue. I'm wondering if that can be addressed by the applicant. Because I don't believe there's a good way to mitigate the smell of refuse coming off of a privy vault restroom. That they're now suggesting should be at the site. So again, without more detail on that. It's too premature to be approving these applications. Another thing I'd like to quickly address. And I don't want to beleaguer some of the things that have already been discussed, but it sounded like there was some discussion briefly of the dark sky ordinance. And, and in fact, my client's concerns about light pollution. You know, McCall, like many other cities in Idaho, prides itself on, on not only the natural wonders of the daytime environment, but also. The ability of the locale to view the night sky. And it looks like from this design that we're gonna have a lot of lighting. And there's been no detail provided as to when those lights are gonna turn on, when they turn off. And, you know, given that this location, it's our understanding, especially considering that the restroom had been removed. There's not going to be any onsite employees there. And there's of course going to be limited hours of operation. So we'd like to know and preferably have as a condition of approval, something in writing about when those lights are going to be turned off. And if so, whether they could also have some kind of sensor monitoring. So that when there's no one at the storage unit, or when there's no one attending any of the storage units in this location. That there simply are no lights on. You know, there's, we've got, it sounds like there's gonna be fencing going around most of the property. We don't really see a security issue here from not having lights on at night. And I think the city needs to weigh what is more important here. To me, the, the risk of any issue for the applicant or the, the storage units that are eventually gonna be owned and used. By, by future customers or I guess buyers of these storage units. That's a very minor concern here. Crime is not high in McCall. But what is a great concern is, is ruining those night sky views. That's a real problem. So I'd like to see that addressed as well. And given that it looks like as a, as a recommended condition of approval, staff had suggested. That, that the applicant provide a lease agreement. Perhaps either a lease agreement or a separate maintenance agreement. We could see not only the lighting issue addressed, but also the stormwater facilities maintenance. The staff had mentioned, and I think it was actually the, the. Let me find it here. I believe it was not the staff, but it was. The report provided by the applicant with regard to their stormwater management plan. That report mentioned that. There's going to need to be constant monitoring to make sure that we don't have larger objects. Going down and ruining the, the stormwater management. So we'd like to see some kind of condition for approval here. That the applicant be required to have a clear maintenance plan that identifies exactly who's gonna be maintaining that stormwater. Those stormwater facilities and how they're gonna be monitoring them, especially considering that there's not going to be any employees on site. We don't see any, any assurances at this point with regard to those issues. And that will impact surrounding neighbors and the surrounding environment. So we'd like to see that issue addressed too, before the commission makes any decision on this. And then finally, and I know this was briefly addressed already, we have a lot of concern about the fencing. I just want to remind the commission that not only is the fencing that the, has been shown through the applicant's renderings. Noncompliant with McCall City Code. But even if it were compliant, it's frankly ugly. And we're not dealing with an industrial zone here. We're dealing with kind of the opposite of that, a scenic route. And perimeter fencing is gonna be something that everyone sees. Regardless of how, how much time has passed for the landscaping and the trees to develop. But even that said, I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, we in this site may theoretically look. Twenty years from now, the way they've shown in the renderings where we have these large trees breaking up. What would otherwise be. Broad, broad surfaces and walls that lack windows. And, and run counter to not only the comprehensive plan, but also what's required in, for the scenic, for the scenic route. It's important for the commission to remember that, you know, you're making a decision not based off of what this is going to look like in twenty years. But also what it's gonna look like in one year, in five years. And how this project looks in the next five years is just as important as how it looks in the preceding five years after that. And the preceding five years after that. So I encourage the commission to consider that all of the renderings that you've seen with regard to the landscaping are showing you the most ideal version of this. But it's really not realistic with regard to what this site is going to look like for the foreseeable future and frankly, for many years going out. So not only do we have. Relatively limited landscaping in, for the foreseeable future while those trees are still small. But we also have this very ugly perimeter fencing that's not up to the standards of McCall. With all of that said, we really encourage the commission to continue this public hearing to a later date. When the applicant can address these issues adequately before a decision is made. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dan. Okay, with that, we'll go to additional comments. I do want to remind everybody, if, if some of the items have already been discussed in the public comments. Please just say you agree with those instead of saying them all over again, it's gonna save everybody some time. But with that, we will go to, is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? You may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Again, anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment? Hey. We'll go to. People here in the audience. I think some of them have already had your. Representative speak, so anybody here in the audience? Anybody here in the audience wish to comment regarding?
Thank you. I'm Scott Harris, eighty-six Oak Lane in McCall, and I'm ecstatic. I just got a birthday wish from my dentist. Asking that I make an appointment, so that I feel wanted. I wanted to talk about the groundwater. I know it's been beaten to death, but I have a packet here. That hopefully I can give to you. The diagram on top is particular. This is a ten-year plot from the USGS of moisture accumulation. In McCall area. Groundwater was measured. From the end of September in two thousand twenty-three until July of twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four were both years of low water accumulation. If you look at the graph, you'll see them, the two lines in the middle that are well below the median. So you don't know what the groundwater is going to be on a high water year. The second. Page that's important shows the plot lines, the, the plot. And there are three sites that I circle. Those are the three sites of the highest groundwater. Within inches in some cases for three months of the year. It goes all the way across the site with groundwater less than two feet for three months of the year. So you don't really know what the groundwater is gonna be, and I, I think that's a great concern. Before I became a physician, I did, I had a concrete placement business. I did over sixty foundations in this community. And I have a pretty fair idea of what it takes to deal with groundwater, and this certainly scares me.
Okay, is there anybody else here?
Thanks, Commission. Kim Apperson, four fifteen South Sampson Trail, and yeah, Dan Goodman. Addressed all of our concerns. I guess just one thing, I know you're gonna hear a rebuttal from the applicant. That all these things can be addressed to the building permit phase. And I, I would just urge you to resist that because I think too many things could change on this site, would have to change on this site. Because of those high groundwater issues and the placement of buildings and how costly it may be. To create footings that will stay in place on those buildings. So, thanks.
There anybody else here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application?
My name is Joe Ba. I live at four one five South Sampson Trail, directly across from the current property. The questions I had, some of them came up even more because every time we come here, we get all this information like when we're here. So I can't address a lot of this because I didn't hear half the stuff beforehand. And I sent a letter in today. I hope you read it concerning the. Groundwater, but you know, then they come up, so we got a privy toilet. I'm concerned about that privy toilet because we live across from the property there, and if that starts to stink, I can swear we're gonna deal with it. And, and I, I want to say that, that, that is a hazard in a sense to the community. Who goes into a community with a residential community across the street and puts in a damn privy toilet? I mean, that's about the biggest insult they can do other than building that building they're building. Or want to build. So I would urge you to at least continue this until you can find out full information. And fully discuss this issue about not only the groundwater. I read a letter, I wrote a letter describing our problems with groundwater. Our house has dropped a foot since it was built. We have a French drain around it and we have. A drain in the center of the house too, to pull it up. We still have water in there. We still get water outside. If I knew this, I wouldn't have bought this place thirty, twenty-eight years ago. We have done everything we could with building ours on there, on, on buildings on, on our site. We've had to go to a great deal of concern, a great deal of expense and a great deal of extra work to put buildings in on that property. And we're not covering two acres with asphalt and buildings. I don't see anything in anything that I've seen that addresses that issue with the groundwater. As the fact that we are gonna cover essentially two acres. And not know what's underneath there. I think that's a big concern. I have a concern with the lights. I want to say that I think that's a big concern. I have a big concern, you know, with just plain the visuals on this place. We haven't actually seen the visuals because all they have is these false trees that they put up there. That's not gonna be what it looks like. I haven't seen a full shot of the building without anything. Personally, I don't see any native like wood or, or rocks or anything on this property. Also, everything on there is linear. I, I, I read the, your scenic route that it should not be linear. Landscaping. The landscaping is limited. Even though they grow the trees on the computer, that's not what it's gonna look like, even thirty years from now. Those aren't natural trees. This is an eyesore. It is gonna be the death of your scenic route. No, no, no question about that. And they don't seem to want to do anything, like maybe put it back further or put a berm in. They talk about the Boydston one over there. They are not even on a scenic route and they put a berm in. But these guys can't, you know, so it, it's not a prime property. I don't know whether they consider that a prime property with a privy on it.
Anybody else in the audience that wish to comment regarding this application? Beck, is there anybody else on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application? And if you're muted, you may need to hit star six.
Hi, this is Corinne Graham. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm the, the civil engineer on the project, and so I just wanted to make some comments about the groundwater elevations in regards to the foundations.
Corinne? You want to do it within the three minutes or have it on the rebuttal with the, from the applicant?
I think the three minutes is probably adequate, but if Abby needs to call me back in, would that be all right?
Have you with the applicant on the rebuttal?
Yes.
So right now we're just doing the public comment.
Okay. I, I can speak as public comment for now.
No, Corinne, you, you legitimately can't as an applicant.
Yeah.
So we'll just bring it back.
I will wait till rebuttal then. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else online or on the phone that wished to comment? Okay, with that, we will. Close the public comment section, and now with the applicant would like to rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um I think what I'll do is just start with Corinne's comments on groundwater. That seemed to be a major focus by the public comment. So Corinne, could you please address? Um what has been discussed as it relates to the groundwater levels and the foundation? Um before you get started, Corinne, I would just note for the commission that Morgan has reviewed the current groundwater information. And has found that our plans do meet the standards for the city. There's been discussions about the hypotheticals of, well, what happens in the event of a high-water year? That happens on any project. Um we can certainly have a condition of approval. That we will ensure that those standards are met, but we can't go off of hypothetical information. So Corinne, can you go ahead and address what's been um discussed so far?
Sure, I just want to double check that everyone can hear me again.
Yes, we can.
So for for the record, I'm Corinne Graham uh with Civil Site Works, PO Box six oh five nine Boise, Idaho eight three seven oh seven. Um so to discuss the groundwater, um Morgan and I have worked pretty extensively on the stormwater design and. Worked through the groundwater issues there. I think she um confirmed that with her comments earlier as well. So we've got some additional freeboard. In the pond to provide for additional storage, um and the pond is is oversized to account for any potential groundwater. Um. At this time, the pond is designed to be above the groundwater levels that were monitored through the spring. Of two thousand twenty-four, and we are also continuing to monitor groundwater through this spring uh just for our own piece of mind. And because this year the snow is a bit higher than it was last year. So um we just want to confirm that the. Groundwater levels that we measured last year are adequate for design, um and that we're taking into account enough factors of safety there. Um as far as the foundations are concerned, I'm also not a foundation expert, and we will be consulting our geotech again. Um but the, I can comment generally on some foundation elements. So. I did provide to Morgan um. The elevation difference between the building finished floors as currently proposed. Um in comparison to the groundwater levels that were monitored last year. And our finished floor elevations are at least twelve inches above that groundwater level, if not more than that. Uh some are in excess of two feet above that groundwater level. The ground, the foundations will be slab-on grade, and those will have a free draining gravel mat underneath. Um to provide for water to move beneath that foundation. And then at the footing locations around the perimeter of each building, we would propose to do perforated foundation drains, which are. Pretty good at um collecting that groundwater and then directing that away from the buildings and away from the building foundations. So that we don't experience any freezing. Um. Construction would occur in the summer months when groundwater levels are at their lowest, and that would um prevent any groundwater contamination when those foundations are excavated. And once that foundation is allowed to cure, uh we wouldn't expect any adverse effects of. Groundwater levels raising up into those footings. Um. So I think that is kind of my general comments on groundwater and the foundation design, and I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Corinne at this point?
Uh yeah, I I've got a question. Um and it it's more has to do with the storm. The storm drainage.
Sure.
And it looks like, let me pull this up here. It it looks to me like. The bottoms, so your eighteen, your eighteen-inch line. Oh, I just switched pages here. Hold on just a second. Looks like your eighteen-inch line, your invert. On that is at sixty sixty-seven and. Roughly nine tenths-ish. And then your outlet is at into the drainage pond is at a sixty-seven and. Uh and a and a tenth and a half there. So you're you're six hundred. In three hundred feet of piping, you have roughly six inches of drop, and then. The the pond itself, I'm curious about because it looks like the design of the pond is that it is a. Uh it's designed to be an infiltration-type basin. Is that correct?
It does have the ability to infiltrate, but we are also proposing an outlet control structure that would um discharge water from the pond to the west.
To the west, okay. That's that's kind of what I was trying to make sense of because it looks like you have a, you have a very limited amount of fall. Um to the basin, and then if our existing ground at that level is roughly about. Fifty sixty-nine, and that's the bottom of your current. Uh or or your proposed basin that in high-water times, you're not, you're not gonna have much storage in there. Is what it looks like to me, like you'll almost be immediately, especially in when we have high groundwater. So if your high, if your high groundwater is anywhere near that sixty-nine. Level, um and and especially given that you're gonna have an infiltration-type basin that'll open itself up to the groundwater below. Um so I'm just curious as to how. I I'm really curious as to what happens to the west, uh because I think in in the times when you likely need that storage in the late spring and our wet months and. Um. That you'll likely be full of groundwater in that, in that. Storage basin. So that, I'm trying to understand how. How you actually store infiltrate during during times of high water. That's.
Sure, and so the design doesn't account for any infiltration out of the bottom of the pond. Um so if that is something that the commission would like removed um to protect groundwater, that is totally fine. Um those ponds can be lined. Um or we can just do well-compacted soil that wouldn't allow for any infiltration. Um. The current bottom of the pond is set at twelve inches above. The highest groundwater level that was monitored last spring. So we have a foot of. Safety built in um. So that groundwater level could come up another foot from where it was measured at the high point last year. Um before it starts filling that storm pond. So that's, that's quite a bit of. I guess buffer, if you would. Um. And then to the west, um they, their design to the west incorporated a pipe as well to pick up the historic drainage that we are routing through our site. Um so they have incorporated that and accounted for it, and. Will take that water through their site and then discharge it to the north, and then. Um HJ about a quarter mile north of the site is the ultimate kind of slow wetland area where all of this water ends up. But hopefully that addresses your questions.
Yeah, it kind of does. It just, it seems to me that even if, even if you, if the bottom of your basin is at. Is at fifty sixty-nine, and then you have a foot of gravel and then a sand bed. And so it appears to me that you only have. That you're, that. We're dumping water out at the water line from your storage or from your stormwater invert. Its outlet is in essence your high watermark, I guess, from the data that we've, that we have. So you're kind of dumping water at at the water level, uh and then expecting. I don't know, I I don't see, I don't see that that. I don't know that you have all that much storage. I'm I'm just curious. I'm trying to make sense of it. You know, here between the 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 invert where you're picking it up. In your manhole, and then it drops, you know, however much into into this basin. And then it seems like you're you're right at what that water table is at, where you're dumping that water.
So that, the outlet point that that discharges all of the water to the west is, it matches the existing channel out there and the existing ground, and. There, I would say there are times where that is saturated, but it is not free-flowing. It doesn't pond up. Um. There hasn't been any standing water observed there. So there, there isn't any reason why that pipe should not discharge out. Um to the site next door.
Okay, what, and what is the elevation of the overflow? To.
Uh over. Sorry, I have to look that up on my end as well. So the overflow is at a seventy point six five. And the discharge is at a sixty seven point one five.
Okay.
So. I know. Are you done, Tom? Sorry.
Y- y- yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I guess my, so. You have, now you have all, you have two acres of paved lot and roofs. Um. All that water is gonna go into that storm drain instead of. You know, you you mentioned it doesn't pool up in the neighbor's property, but. Uh you have historic, you know, in the past, there's been two acres of. Uh dirt that absorbs a lot of that water. That is not gonna happen now. So I'm. I'm just curious to, if you even um factored any of that in.
So the, but the pond itself is being built to accommodate the runoff from the new rooftops and drive aisles. And the calculations for that pond and how it was sized. Um were conducted in accordance with McCall's Drainage Management Guidelines, which Morgan, Morgan has reviewed and has indicated. Is appropriate for the site. Um and the calculations also show that 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 pond is actually oversized. Um so it can actually hold water from a hundred-year storm. And not just a ten-year storm, which is what the McCall guidelines require uh before, so that that pond could fill up significantly um and and hold a lot of water. Before, before there's any flooding issues.
So I'm reading Morgan's notes, and it says, "Thank you for submitting an updated drainage report." "The narrative appears this project may meet Drainage Management Guidelines with the submittal of additional supporting materials." So it doesn't sound to me like Morgan has signed off on this. That.
And that, that's not what we, I guess that was not the um. I have, I don't know, Abby, if you, if you have something to, but.
Yeah, I think.
We're gonna.
I think. Engineer can address this. I think Morgan can address this, Corinne.
Please.
So I. Given. All of the pieces. Um and then the one, the one portion that I want to finalize before approving the stormwater report completely is making sure. It connects well with the a property next door that we've approved already, um and that it matches and everything cohesive there. Um so that's one of those, those items that I'm, that we're working on, that is kind of in the final design stage. It might be moving a pipe. Like a few feet or not. Um so it shouldn't be too. It it shouldn't change the site plan much to make those two match, um to make sure they're one, they work as one system essentially. Um and then they are, there is a bypass of the large tributary area through the property that's not going through the pond. Um so me, that's another, that's another point that we're double-checking is that there's no pinch point. Not gonna cause flooding or anything when it enters the neighboring pond. So now we're taking into consideration the neighbor's design that's been approved um with all the historic flows and that more channelized flow. Um. And they are, they are meeting the detention requirements of the Drainage Management Guidelines as they're showing now um. With the ten-year storm. Um Meredith kind of had that on the, on the, on the screen previously of kind of the cross-section of the pond. Um and then there's a ten-year water surface elevation shown. And then lower in one of those pipes is a three point nine three-inch orifice, and that is to release the. The pond at that historic ten-year rate. So if this project was never developed, that's the rate that it would normally discharge through. Um. So that's kind of how they control that flow, so they collect it all and then add a slower leak back to its historic.
Let's to, um spoil its overflow. But you, you've approved that drainage.
I haven't approved the report yet, but the concept it meets, it meets what I would, I would consider it meeting the Drainage Management Guidelines.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Petty, I think what is important to distinguish here is that. That final approval happens at building permit phase with engineering approval. It is not something that would typically occur today with SRDR approval. I think what Morgan has said is she has evaluated the site for its feasibility at this location, and that has been found to be feasible. The remainder of these issues will be adjustments that may, are made in final design at building permit. Um so again, I think it would be a standard condition of approval that. These issues would have to be satisfied and resolved prior to issuance of a building permit.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, are there any other questions on the groundwater aspects of it? I I want to make sure we feel comfortable with that, and then I'll briefly touch on some of the other concerns that were raised.
I'm I'm curious about, there was, there seemed to be some question about what, what in fact was the seasonally high groundwater. I think when I look at your design, it's showing. A seasonally high groundwater at sixty-six, and then it looks like some of the information that Scott Harris provided shows that it was. You know, close to two tenths below the surface in a number of locations, and so I'd. I I'd like to kind of have that resolved. I, you know, for. You know, what data are we looking at here too is kind of important. And 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 I also do think, I mean, although you're right, that there will be engineering approval at at the building permit. We also should consider that here, and one, one question that I do have is what is your finished floor elevation of these units as well? Because it looks like to me. You know, you you only have, you have six inches um to where it backs up, and then you probably have another. Foot until it's up to the road, and then, you know, what, wh- where are we, where are we at with our finished floor of the building? It doesn't seem like that's called out yet in the drawings that I'm looking at.
Corinne, can you answer that?
I can speak to that, sure. Um. So the finished floor elevations of the building are. At a fifty seventy-two or higher, most of them are higher. Um and that is on. The, the three-point O of the grading plan, so there's a finished floor elevation for every building. Um and then the overflow for the pond. Is at a seventy point six five.
Okay.
And so we're um.
Two feet.
By the time that starts to, yeah, by the time that pond starts to overflow to the west, um you're still a foot and a half below any of the. By the time that starts to, yeah, by the time that pond starts to overflow to the west, um, you're still a foot and a half below any of the, any of the buildings. So significantly lower.
Okay. Yeah. Thank, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And then, oh, sorry, as far as the elevation, um, so we have provided a table of elevations to the city and I think that should be in your packet. Um, there was one small update that was made um after the last hearing. Um, so we had five test pits on site and those were, the groundwater in those test pits was measured every week um from January to June of last year. And they are provided um both in depth format, so depth from existing ground and then they are also provided in elevation format. And because the elevation of the site varies, um, the elevation of the groundwater across the site also varies. So um, at the lowest point near the storm drain pond, the groundwater was measured only two inches down from the existing ground. Um, so we are actually going to be filling the area where the pond is going to fit to make sure that the bottom of that pond is quite a bit higher than the elevation. That's, we're shooting for a twelve inch separation. So where we only saw two inches of separation in the spring of last year, uh, we're going to be raising that part of the site to make sure that we're at more like twelve inches above that groundwater level. Is our goal.
Okay. Okay. And then your, your goal with that basin was for it to be a, a leaky type basin, a, to infiltrate.
Uh, it doesn't need to. So the design doesn't actually account for that in any way. Um, so we can remove that fan filter and, and still achieve the city's requirements.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that information.
Of course.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if there are no other questions on groundwater, I, I'd like to just briefly touch about it on a couple other issues that were raised. Um, regarding Mr. Goodwin's comments about snow storage and the location of snow storage. Um, Mr. Goodwin is incorrect about the location of snow storage as it relates to the landscaping. We did work with city staff to remove the snow storage in the area that we intend to landscape. So that issue has been resolved. Um, in addition, the discussion about thirty three percent of the snow storage um requirement, that does not account for any of the snow storage that is intended to occur on the roofs. When we include that calculation, which again, the city has stated would be a viable option for snow storage, we are more in the range of sixty six percent um of needed uh snow storage. So we far exceed what, what is needed um for this site. Um, also it, just to reiterate, we have also far exceeded the required setbacks um for this facility. Um, as indicated, the, the setback, I believe on the front, Meredith, you said was five, five feet. Um, we are at about forty five and sixty seven feet. Um, so we have through multiple re- iterations of this site and these plans, we have removed a building. Um, we have also relocated and slid the buildings back and reconfigured the location or the direction of the buildings in order to facilitate a larger setback um and, and additional landscaping on the front of that. Um, there were comments made about lighting. I have conferred with um the applicant. They are more than happy to agree to a condition of approval to ensure that lighting um abides by any of the dark sky requirements, um, including sensors and or time restraints on, on that lighting. So not, not an issue there. Um, same with fencing. If the, if the commission determines that they would like to see more natural looking materials, we are certainly happy to accommodate that and would be happy to agree to a condition of approval um that dealt with that. One other issue I would just like to again um bring up is that the issues that have been um discussed related to the outstanding groundwater comments. Again, those are all issues for engineering approval and building permit. They should not hold up the approval of this SRDR. Um, in order for us to move forward with the project and even applying for a building permit, we have to get this approval taken care of. And so that's why we really are asking for the commission to please approve um the SRDR applications with the conditions of approval that you all see fit. And we will certainly ensure that we meet all necessary requirements as it relates to engineering approval and building permit. Um, so I'm happy to answer any other questions the commission may have.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this time?
I, I do have one question and I apologize if this is obvious to everybody else, but I'm trying to visualize where the fencing is located on your plan. Could you walk me through that quickly?
Jeff, do you want to take that?
Commissioner Rock, um, the fence is located on the northern property line where we have uh our property, yeah, just right there, uh, runs along the north and that is the only location uh that we have a proposed fence. All other locations, we were able to mitigate with either, we're not storing snow to the west, so we don't have a, a, a need for a snow storage fence on that side. And on the south, we actually have a retaining condition. Um, so that would be um, you know, below uh grade. So just on that northern side.
You're
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Snow storage is where the septic tank used to be, correct?
No, our snow storage has stayed regardless of the septic location. Septic location would be approximately another ten percent snow storage uh with that being removed. So in addition to the thirty three point two and the other thirty percent that we have on roof, it would be an additional ten, which would get to this to about seventy six percent snow storage on the site.
On the area of
I was gonna say it's never been a topic here.
So we'd be at forty, you know, forty three point two percent.
Minus your pit toilet now.
Correct. So forty three percent.
Is that the number you have calculated? Thirty three is what you calculated?
I'd have to recalculate based on pit privy exhibit, but the pit privy is technologically small when I overstood the snow storage calculation. I just don't want snow in the pit privy, I suppose.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant at this point?
Chairman Lyons, one uh item that came up from the public testimony that I'd also like to clarify at least our, our intent as the applicant for the dark sky ordinance, I think it's prudent to have a condition that requires motion sensors and photovoltaics so that those are only on when active in the evenings. I'll stand for any other questions.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing on the side?
Just to remind you that your direction is to review the criteria and discuss. That is the procedure.
Again, on, on the criteria, you don't really have anything specific on the fencing at this point, correct?
That's a specific standard. So um you could require that a revised fence plan has to be submitted that is in compliance with the fencing code. A way to navigate that if you feel comfortable not reviewing it yourselves.
It'd be administratively approved. Yeah. But it's not in any of the Commissioners, any other questions for the staff before we close public comment or public hearing, excuse me? All right, I make a motion, we close the public hearing on the side. Second motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. All right, hearings closed. Commissioners, discussions, thoughts, concerns? I'll start at once.
I see a bill's camera on in case he has a
Well, we have to open back up to talk about it.
It's a procedural comment.
Oh, proceed.
At your leisure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, this is Bill Punkinney, City Attorney. Um, maybe just as a starting point, I would suggest that we review the criteria applicable to the scenic route and design review and uh discuss whether or not we believe the applicant has adequately met those criteria.
All right.
Do you like to start with design review or scenic route review?
Uh, we have, let's do the uh design review.
So criteria A, the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Commissioners, thoughts on that one? Think in general what kind of is, but then there's a couple.
I guess in, in the commercial buffer zone, yes.
In the commercial zone. Or some commercial, she said.
Yeah.
I would say it probably
My sense of it is generally, yes, it is in general conformance.
B, the project does not jeopardize the health, safety or welfare of the public.
They're probably not really anything to just step on that one. All right.
And I do need your actual thoughts so that I can someday write findings and conclusions.
I don't believe that it affects anything, but would say the
Is the potential smell from the privy toilet a health, safety or welfare concern?
Odor control tends to fall into that category.
Yes, I'm um. You know, we just built a walking path there as well. Now we're going to have, I don't know if that's safety crossing out into a narrow public scenic route. I think I'm kind of on the fence with Liz about that. There could be some issues. Um, we could say it absolutely does not jeopardize.
And this application um says if they get proof of from Central District Health, then they're going to put it in the restroom or two. Um, but if not, then they're going to put a privy toilet. It's, this allows them either or, is that correct?
Right now they will not get permission put in the septic. Right now it is strictly the privy toilet.
But they also have the option of actually not putting any toilet in. Use CCL or CCNRs and what have you, but it's as an amenity. They're wanting to create it.
Yeah.
Our profile thinks.
Do you like C?
Yeah.
The project conforms to applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as enumerated in section three point one six point zero one. So this would be where a condition would need to capture um compliance with the fencing ordinance. Um. Think
With the lighting.
Condition relating to lighting. Um. I think that that would be what's, what's covered in there or just general compliance to the code.
Yeah, with, I think with the conditions of approval at this point in time, it would, or with, it's what's being discussed at this point in time. So now down to D.
Um, the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties around the community at large.
A part of that, we're just going to double check the flow. I know a lot of it naturally flows on the long that north boundary of the adjoining property already, but you're going to confirm that not going to impact any further of that, that being so concentrated.
That would be involved in that.
In the final engineering, yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that and with the condition on the, the lighting as well.
Yeah, may still have some concern on the neighbors across with that height of the buildings that close to the road, do it. How does that impact their view corridor? And it's a scenic route. SG.
I guess I'm
You can include it in multiple places.
Yeah, yeah, potentially both. Is it, I mean, it's going to be over a little way. It does drop down a little, so it may not be as much as it appears to be on the rendition.
I, I guess I'm still struggling with subdivision since we know that's their intention.
They have to do an application back in front of us.
Yeah, so, but they're asking us to approve a design review that may not hit a subdivision.
Yeah, I read it at this time. There is no subdivision design for us to consider. So at this time, uh, item E is not applicable.
And if they did, it would still have to come back and fit within the subdivision.
Okay. F, for projects in shoreline and river environment zone, the project will not have an unreasonable or adverse impact on the visual quality of its setting or the water quality. Not applicable. And G, for projects in the scenic route zone, the project will preserve and enhance the scenic quality of the street or highway.
Sure, it really enhances.
Well, so the hard thing about that is because there's a lot of non-conformity, conforming things in that corridor anyway. That's the trouble. That's, that's the hard part of that, that whole scenic corridor because it's not um, and even further down the road on the low, they're, they're adding more there now as well. So I mean, it's, it's, looks better than what some of those more civic things are that are out there. Um, it's interesting. I don't know what I think about that.
I guess how many of those were grandfathered before the senior group designation for the, my question about it. Yes, it's pretty mixed use, but it is now a senior group.
Yeah, I think most of those were done prior because it was fairly recent that that was put down to the scenic route. This time. Roughly, I think so, too long ago. Yeah, that's
I also think I'm right. Go ahead, Liz. Oh, I also think to, to challenge on item G, we would need to provide recommendations on how to change the, the frontage to make it more aligned with the
The the frontage to make it more aligned with the values and. I I think they've done as good a job as they can considering the usage of the facility.
All right, students, in the scene. Yeah.
Your scenic route review criteria are, other than the material being provided. Um, determine whether the proposed development, improvement, or use will. One, block or disrupt the visibility of significant views or features of scenic route.
Yeah. No, I mean, I know there's going to be more units directly to the west.
It's not Washington, Yak Barn, so.
Yeah, north of that. I don't know about you.
Yeah, I I struggle with the setback, the bulk, the landscaping. It is so close to the road and the pathway and to Liz's point, without a. Septic system, buildings could be moved again. Building to the north is considerably further off the road. And. There's what, five feet between the pathway and the building? There's not going to be a lot of room for a tree that's 20 feet tall.
So with that in mind, do we want to ask them to? Kind of reseat the design to have a additional setback to protect the scenic route a little bit more?
That would be great for me. I mean. They, yes, they, you know. The design has changed considerably since the first one, but they came to us with again another revision tonight that. We're trying to. Um, process on why. Just trying to find the. Yeah, I mean, it looks like, um, building three and two could move to the west a little more and be off the pathway. Without that septic tank. And and apparently it's not snow storage either, so.
Yeah, that would help me. Gain some snow storage here, too, if it, yeah, to the west more. Yeah, I would wouldn't mind seeing it off that road a little bit more. I think we. Be less impactful to the road. If we drive by, less impactful to the neighbors looking across at it. And we know farther to the west is going to be units anyway, so.
Correct. It all moves, everything.
Yeah.
Consolidates it more in that commercial.
If that could be done, that would. Definitely like lower the impact on the scenic route.
And actually get the landscape buffer in there.
Right, number two.
Number two is the proposed development improvement or use will be compatible in terms of setback, bulk, height, design, finished materials, signing, and landscaping with its immediate surroundings and the desired visual quality of the scenic route. So I think our discussion that we just had also applies to to here. Um, one of the concerns, you know, as I'm trying to visualize the buildings through the proposed landscaping is. Uh, there was one view, uh, where I I think, let me back up, I think. A lot of the structure facing Sampson Trail has some variability, um, you know, some kind of. Different layers, different depths, but as there's this one shot where it looks kind of like a flat wall at the very end, I think by setting back the entire structure more. Um, reduces the kind of imposition of this, that that big wall, big flat wall. Yeah, the picture I'm thinking of is on 115, it's 115 of the packet. And you can really see it on 113.
And, yeah, and again, I mean, that's, there's a birch tree right up against the building, which we know will never. I guess I appreciate that they made an attempt to show us. Some more initial landscaping, but I don't think it may be. Possible to do it the way they have it. So again, yeah, Liz, moving it even, you know. Eight to 10 feet more to the west would be considerable improvement.
Yeah.
Also wonder, I look a little bit closer to some of those windows that would be necessarily. Is that going to be exactly have windows looking into the storage units? There's one of the pictures where I think it was in the end when it was a blank wall, but that is. I don't know if these are actual windows or just. Yeah, intense. Yeah, we should be breaking it up so we don't have a blank wall.
Yeah.
Not really showing any windows, but that's one along the road. And it doesn't have the same. About too long. Sorry. Now, that really matches. I think some of the newer ones have it more.
You know what the offset is between building one and building three off of Sampson? Because building one seems like it has a lot.
As far as her back.
Yeah.
You know what the difference is between the two? The one I draw, it's too small.
Scrolling, scrolling.
Thirty seven point four as opposed to 20. Seven, so 17. No, 72 feet.
Yeah, that's huge.
Just curious about that. Septic fill seems. By and large, frankly, for a toilet or two. Curious what those calc's are like. Or where a good position that to allow for those buildings to shift back or something.
Yeah, for just the bathroom, which you typically wouldn't have three drain lines.
Yeah, it's it's pretty large.
Yeah. I know about it. They still have a replacement area designed as well. Any other items on item two? Or we got this?
Those are your criteria.
It's Richard.
I could read the purpose statement of the scenic route code if you wanted.
Probably a quick read would.
Purpose of the scenic route overlay zone is to preserve and enhance the scenic quality of public collector and arterial streets. That is the only purpose statement.
Missioners, thoughts? I see the items that we. It it hears two other ones that are, and then there's questions, concerns on some. There is some ways to alleviate some of those items as well. Concern.
So the biggest, uh, you know, there's things that conditions of approval are going to resolve. As far as I'm concerned, the groundwater, that is, that is an engineering thing. And that will be dealt with that way if they were to raise the buildings, which that would be terrible. Because they have to bring in more material, slope things of it. It just changes the whole. By in so many ways, um, and it's quite expensive to do something like that. But that's, and you know, the lighting. Even as I was, was suggested by the applicant. And administratively approving the fence, that's great. As far as what we're looking at, sign review, shoreline, or not shoreline, scenic route. Yeah, it was just, there's. Not a lot of screening, landscaping, it's just hard there. It's just a regular street, no problem, but. That one building for me is just, just hard to. To screen that and make it look like it's sort of our community. Um, even to the south, I believe that, I'm not sure how far off. Sampson Trail, that building is, seems like there's like 30 feet or something, so I think it's setback even. A little bit further than what this one building would be.
Little white house.
Uh, no, it's the garage. It's that, it's that shop. It's exactly, but. But if they're able to do some shifting. I would take a good look at that septic, I mean, aside the scrap it or whatever. And then stick that privy right in the middle of the side. I don't know. I would be more inclined. I'd feel a lot better about it.
I couldn't have said that better myself. I agree with everything you just said.
So Liz, you would say we're, uh, a potential motion three or five?
I I guess the question is. Can we make it administrative to have the shifting of the building back, or do we want to see it again with the with the building shift back and and more screening with the the privy removed or moved to the center? Um, seems to be something that we should probably look at again. Considering that the scale of everything, so I would say it's three. What do you guys think?
So more information on the fencing. Moving the building to the west and adding more landscaping, uh. I think Sam was right, some of the other stuff, although. Your point about groundwater and raising them three feet would really change the project for me. So as long as we're building that route, we could add more groundwater engineering, right?
I I think at the point, if they have to change the building design to accommodate what they learn more with groundwater, then it would have to come back to us. You know, if they're raising the building heights and that, then I I think we can run with the assumption that. Um, groundwater is going to be fine. The building design doesn't change and. And leave it to the engineering to to work through those details, and then if it does change the design and the height, then it has to come back to us.
You guys would also like to see. The building, no landscaping in front of it, or a rendition of the building with no landscaping in front of it with the actual materials being used on that rendition, so. Because these seem to have changed slightly from the, there's, you know, the ones that didn't really have that. I I like to see a little bit more exactly what that is. But we know exactly what's being seen from the street until that landscaping gets thicker. I mean, they can do some of it. They'd just like to see more of what the material is. You just can't tell from here.
From these, exactly. There's some pretty specific number of plants and trees, correct? So that would reflect. Well, that actually would be planted would be great.
We'd like a zero plants and an accurate two landscape plan rendering with increased setback.
Correct.
The the now plantings as opposed to 20 years.
That's, that's kind of what I want, yeah.
I think with the setback is. Much as feasible on that.
Because, yes, that was, it's got to be seen, it's got to be seen it for the next five years, too.
And I heard by a minimum of eight to 10 feet. So you said commissioner, buddy?
Oh, uh, the other buildings, it's a 17 foot difference, but I guess it would be, you know. If they want to keep some of the septic for, yeah, let's go with 10 to 15 feet. How's that?
Okay.
Anything besides fence, lighting's okay.
There'll have to be a condition of that, and the fencing is going to be a condition of, so.
So that's, but we're going to get to that next time around.
Yeah.
Which still have approval.
Yeah.
Where they can put it in the next round of drawings.
Seems to address all that opening I had. Hi, Bill.
Missioners, Mr. Chairman, thanks for recognizing, um, yeah, just thinking through this, uh, procedure of this, we may want to reopen the public hearing tonight and continue it to the next meeting so that we don't have to renotice.
Okay.
Just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Let's finish our deliberations at this point, and if we're ready to do motion, I'll reopen it prior to the motion. That works. Because we're going to have to reopen it to make the motion to continue it to the next. If there's any other deliberations at this point, let's discuss those at this before we reopen. Are we all, and it seems like we're kind of on the same page. Okay, I make a motion, read, reopen public meeting. The public hearing, second, give a motion, a second, all favor.
Hi. Hi.
Now I'm open for motion.
Move to continue, year 2428, S R 24, to the.
April 1st.
We go first.
April 1st meeting to allow time for staff and the applicant to provide more information on the following. A wider landscape buffer along Sampson Trail for building three, I believe. And, uh. A code. A code, code approved fencing material.
Then I had a note on a rendering without any landscaping and one with the actual proposed exterior finished materials. As well as the landscape plan.
And just to be clear, we're continuing the public hearing. But it's important that we continue the public hearing.
I believe that was for that motion, yes.
You can also say so.
So.
Second, right, we have my motion and a second to. Continue the public hearing as well as the other items addressed. And if it's a roll call.
Um, Chairman Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty, Commissioner Milstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Pa.
Yes.
Commissioner Rock.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
The loss is absent.
All right, okay, Gary. Okay, we move along to new business. Yeah, conditional use permit twenty three fourteen.
That's.
Oh, it is a public hearing, so I make a motion, reopen the public hearing. Second now, motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Right.
Hey, this is the annual review for a conditional use permit for a short term rental, we have Dave Phillips here.
Yeah. First, I gotta compliment the new, the new place where we meet, this is beautiful and it's great. It was just over a year ago that I was in front of the planning and zoning commission, and then it was almost exactly a year ago that I was in front of the city council. As, as the chairman said, this is to do the annual review. And let me, let me start with simply saying that I'm gonna attempt to be brief and, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And so, and and feel that I'm prepared to do so. The conditions of the approval were final engineering approval, that was completed. There was a condition to install electronic noise monitoring equipment at the, at the property. We did that, that was done on May thirteenth of twenty twenty four. And although the the quiet period is, you know, from ten P M to eight A M, we actually monitor the noise. Twenty four hours a day, we have, we're able to set custom thresholds, so we set a higher threshold when it's not quiet hours. Because we, I mean, we, we still want to know if if something were to be getting out of hand. But and then then those are lowered during the quiet hours because we want to be respectful to the neighbors and and be in compliance. There, we did have one noise alarm that occurred. And it was during the quiet period, it was not while the place was being rented. Because a majority of the time, we don't have renters there, but we do have friends and family who go there and use the place. When the alarm went off, we immediately contacted them and asked them to be quiet, and we could see on the monitor that the noise immediately reduced. So even though that technically is not a violation, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be a good part of the community in the neighborhood. We did have one neighbor who contacted us regarding noise. This was not during the quiet period, so once again officially not a problem, but once again, we immediately contacted the renters. We spoke with them and the noise was reduced. Let's see. Uh, let's see, another of the the points of approval was that we be subject to a review of compliance with the cup. Requirements, short term rental ordinances of the city of McCall, one year after, and that's, that's why we're here. And I confidently state that we have met all requirements of the city and intend to continue to do so. Another was the the maximum occupancy was set at sixteen people, which is in compliance with the ordinances of the city. And we have actually rejected groups that were larger than sixteen people because that's not in compliance. And the the log of all of the renters, we, we have submitted that and and you can see that in the log. There were other reasons that we've also rejected renters, but I'll I'll come to that in a minute. Again, that we be compliant with all applicable requirements of chapter thirteen in McCall City Code. And yes, we have been fully compliant and then submit logs annually. We, we've kept a log, we continue to keep a log and it is attached. I will note that the, so our first renter, I believe, checked in in May of last year, May thirtieth, so it was very end. So really, we've got. What what I submitted was through the end of January, because it was early February that that I was. Asked to submit the the log, so that's what I did. And so we've got about eight months of runtime in what I have submitted thus far. My intent in the future is to submit that based on an annual basis. So although I already submitted January of twenty twenty five, next year I plan to submit all of twenty twenty five and then twenty twenty six and then twenty twenty seven, it just makes it simpler. So that's my intention going forward. So those were the requirements that were, that were laid out for us. I was asked to provide some additional information, staff. Meredith asked me to answer a few questions and, you know, one was, you know, how many groups have we had? And what's the average size? We've had forty groups, average size is just about eight. How do we select guests? It's, it's actually pretty easy. First off, we manage it ourselves, so every guest request is reviewed by the owners. And if they have had any bad reviews, we reject them. If they have zero reviews, we reject them. If we share the rules of staying at our place with potential renters, and if they don't agree to follow the rules, we reject them. If the party size is too big, we reject them. If they meet all of those and have positive reviews, then we accept them. So that's what we've been doing, and it's actually worked quite well. We've, we've had renters that have been by and large very good, no major complaints. I was asked to talk about any calls or complaints issues that we've had. I talked about the one neighbor who contacted us regarding noise, not during quiet hours, which we immediately took steps and reduced it. And then there was another, this one was interesting, last July, a neighbor contacted me. Because there was a neighbor or not, excuse me, a renter who was. Parking like in the yard and exiting not from the driveway. And their concern was, because it's not a driveway, as you, as you exit, you know, there's a burrow pit, and so you're, you're pointed at the moon. As you enter the the road and and he had grandchildren who were playing out front, hopefully not in the street, but it made him nervous. I immediately contacted the renters and they apologized, they said, oh, we won't do that anymore. And then a week later, we went up and we, we knew where they were. Exiting the driveway because it's, it's surrounded by large rocks. And but there was one that it was not, the the end of it was, was not blocked off with large rocks. The reason we didn't is because we were, wanted to push snow there in the winter time. But a week later, we went up, we put a bunch of large rocks there, so now it's no longer even possible. So we eliminated that, that problem from ever arising again. And this year, we were just there and the snow storage, there's still plenty of snow storage, but it's just, it has shortened the driveway a little bit. Because we, we can't push it out into the yard like we used to. So those are the only complaints that we've received and and those are the actions that we have taken. I was also asked if there are any lessons learned and words of advice and. You know, two simple things, don't be afraid to say no and reject people who want to rent because. You are not confident that they're not going to be a problem. And then the other is to be very proactive, if if there's a problem. Contact them and I have yet to have a negative interaction with a guest where they are not apologetic. And immediately stopped doing whatever it was that they may not have realized was a problem. Because it's not in our rules to not drive through the yard and exit over here, I mean, that's, I mean, stuff happens. But once it's pointed out, then they're very quick to follow, follow guidelines. Again, the, you know, there are four potential renters that we rejected, one would not agree to follow all the rules. Another one had three star reviews, we said no, another one had no reviews, no. And and then another one, they had a gathering of of too many people, I don't have it written here how many it was, but it was, it was too many. And anyway, so we rejected them as well, so that's my annual report. It's been very successful, I think positive. And. I don't know if you have any questions for me now, but if if you do, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Real quick, Meredith, I know you had an email out, there were some discussions and you've updated. And the terms, and you wanted to disclose that, you mentioned, I don't know, do you want to disclose that?
Um, I can talk about that now or then my staff report, whichever you prefer.
Um, can the staff report?
Do you want me to do my staff report now?
Uh, me, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Phillips, you, so forty groups, I'm, but I'm looking at your calendar, many of them overlapped. And I believe you have a lockout unit, correct?
A lockout unit? I don't know what that means.
A separate unit that's just a two person rental?
So it could be up to four, it's one bedroom, but it is, there, there's a, a door between the two that has kind of a deadbolt lock. That that we can, we can isolate it, but it's still part of the house, it's not like an auxiliary.
Just looking at your average size guests of eight, but really, there's a lot of these weekends that it's fourteen and two.
Absolutely.
And one, so you are pretty much. Ten, you're above ten guests pretty much every, every weekend.
Oh, I wouldn't say every weekend, I mean, a minority of time is the place rented and there are a number of, I mean, correct, last. Last July, we had considerable open time, which was a little bit surprising to me, but there are. Certainly, we are busier on the weekends than not, and if you, if you look at that list of of renters and the number of guests. Yes, the, if it's a one, two, three or four, yes, that's, that's the smaller. Area of the home that we rent separately and oftentimes if people have. A large group, then they will actually rent both at the same time, so it's one group that occupies everything, if it's a large group.
Any other questions for that? Thank you, all right. Meredith.
City of Sustainability Planner. Mr. Phillips did a good job of summarizing how we got here. So in April of twenty twenty four, the McCall Planning and Zoning Commission did the final review on this conditional use permit application. For a higher occupancy, short term rental under the new short term rental ordinance for the city of McCall. And recommended approval of the application to the McCall City Council in May of last year. All city council approved the application with the conditions of approval and expiration or revisitation terms. Identified within your staff memo, which includes prior issuance, issuance of the short term rental permit, they shall receive final engineering approval. There is pretty much no engineering work to do on this application as it was constructed within the modern building codes. So the water meter was properly sized, everything was properly sized, stormwater was adequate. Prior to issuance of the short term rental permit, the applicant should install that noise monitoring system and he did so. The conditional use permit should should lapse and become void whenever they had not applied for a short term rental permit within one year from the date of approval. They did apply for that permit, so that condition was met. The review of compliance with terms after one year is occurring right now. And you all have the ability to require a secondary public hearing before the McCall City Council if you wish, or if you see need for it. And then conditions set the maximum occupancy based on the two persons per bedroom plus two that's set within the short term rental ordinance. As well as a general statement of compliance with chapter thirteen of McCall City Code. Which regards the permits and application process. And then finally, they shall annually submit logs of rentals requested for the short term rental. So that's a continued ongoing relationship between the short term rental that is in operation and. The short term rental administration staff and myself in monitoring the ongoing compliance. Over the last week, I really sat with my original recommendation, which was no further public review unless a problem should occur. And after speaking with Bill, legal representative this morning, as well as seeing a comment actually submitted right after that conversation this morning from Hannah Drabinski. I'm changing my staff recommendation to be, and I'll read it out for you. Rather than maintaining the existing recommendation that no further annual review should be required unless a problem occurs. Because that would not necessarily leave the city or neighborhood any opportunity for performance evaluation in the event of a new owner or occurrence of problems in the future. I'll revise my recommendation to. Recommend that reviews be conducted administratively unless or until the following occurs. A, a change of ownership of the short term rental property. B, the occurrence of reported and confirmed or observed by city intensification, abuse or violation of applicable city codes. Or C, other changes in conditions deemed by city staff as necessary for review in a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission and or McCall City Council. I did speak through these scenarios and and send this written version to Mr. Phillips this morning after I corrected it. But I think that there's a, an important balance between recognizing the initiative taken by a short term rental of a high occupancy owner. To be a good neighbor and follow the codes as well as manage the process independently quite well from what we've seen in the community in the last few years. But also keep the, for lack of a better word, teeth in place if a, if a problem should arise or if the property should sell. And we don't have that relationship and initiative established, then we can go back into the the oversight and onboarding and training mode. For the entitlement on the property. So if you have a different version of that recommendation or would like this to go to city council or would like to see it every year just for funsies. Or not for funsies, but because you think it's your, your duty, you are welcome to have that thought. That is just my recommendation in consultation with with Bill and consideration of this being a, an ongoing challenge in our community. Trying to understand short term rentals are part of life, big families happen, et cetera, but. We are in a place where they happen. That'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Meredith?
So it's administrative review unless one of these things happen.
That could be like. Six times in a row of the trash can overflowing. A lot that hasn't been addressed, so oh darn, I guess we have to come back and see the commission, say like, what's, what's the garbage issue? Let's solve it together as a group.
It is staff, that ability to determine at what point, it also gives the neighborhood more of a. Opportunity to speak as well, too. Any other questions for Meredith?
I I do have a question, and so just to be very explicit, so there were no police called to the property at any time. And no reports on the McCall reporting systems for people having issues with this property?
That's correct, it confirmed with the short term rental office that we have not had any complaints at this address. And I confirmed, police still does not attach like a check mark of short term rental versus normal residential bonus check or whatever the terminology is. But there had been no comments or recorded problems from any agency, including the short term rental office or the fire department. They have claiming reviews of all of the fire inspections that have occurred to the property as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Right. Right. With this one, we really don't have anything from Morgan, because there's nothing. It's all new.
That is correct. I've issued final engineering approval for this project as stated. Um, it's built new enough that water meters size properly, driveway needs standards. All those things that I'm normally considered.
Right. There's no more, no questions. Morgan, um, this is a public hearing, so we will go to public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? And if you're immune, you may need to hit star six. Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application?
Hi, I'm Candace Drabinski. I live at ten twenty Bitterroot, which is not exactly a neighbor, but I am. A driveway, a very large lot, and then a house, and then my house. And I do have to say that um, I'm one of the people who called for noise control. Um, and the response was very, very quick. They settled it down within minutes, actually. Um. Not having any problems or not having any identified problems with a rental of sixteen people in a housing area. Um, is quite unusual. I do have to say, and it sounds like they've done a great job for not having anybody, any problems at all. Um, there are some situations that I will bring up, and one is. Uh, just the other week, um, snowmobile trailers. I mean, they are like half-sized semis. When you have two so much snowmobile trailers, plus a small snowmobile trailer, plus the pickups that have it. There's a lot of parking going on and a lot of disruption in the street. Um, for people going past. I actually had to go around the street, which is not a big issue when it's once or twice a year, but that is a problem. And the sim kind of goes with the summer with boats and, you know, toys out there and the parking of all that. Otherwise, the cars, I think, are handled really well in that driveway. Um, that being said, uh, putting a. Rental of sixteen people in a neigh, in a quiet neighborhood is challenging for everybody, as Meredith said. Meredith's done a great job on this. Um, and I would definitely go along with the yearly evaluations to make sure that we're on the same page. For having a size of a unit and rental in our area of, there's not very many rentals on our. On the part of Bitterroot that we live on, there's not very many rentals. It's mostly uh, full-time people or people who use their homes a lot for rent. For them coming up. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anybody else here in the audience that wished to comment?
Um, Wayne Roomley, one thousand eight Bitterroot Drive. I sat around, I guess, and trying to decide whether I was going to speak up about this. Um, lived down the street from this house. Um, I would also recommend you continue the annual. Review or administrative approval. Um, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you guys are running it very professionally. Um, there aren't any issues. There's certainly some increased traffic, you know, on, you know, just like uh. Previous speaker said about snowmobile trailers and things like that, but I'm glad to hear everything's going well and um. But yeah, just that opportunity for the annual review, I think, is great.
I think. Anybody else wish to comment here in the audience? Last call for anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment. Hey, with that, I make a motion we finish the public. Comment section. Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing on the side?
I do have one uh, other question, again, to make it explicit. So regardless of our decision today to continue a formal in front of P and Z review. The staff would still execute an annual review of the success of the permit, regardless of our decision today. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yes.
You could memorialize that with a motion that I didn't craft for you really quickly.
Okay. There's no.
No, we can't like go back into an old decision document, but we can provide advisory guidance. Um, so your sample motion would be to advise staff that future annual, annual reviews should be conducted administratively. Unless or until the three conditions identified are, are to occur, triggering a public hearing.
So moved? An easy way to do that?
You can't.
I still move that. I think that's the easiest way for that to, to say it though. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those suggested are those items. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
No.
I shouldn't care. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And then the next item was canceled, and then the next item is continued. Do we need to make a motion to continue that? So. All right, I'll make a motion that we continue public hearing for, you know, April first. Give me folks. Continue the public hearing till April first meeting for design review twenty-five oh one and scenic route twenty-five oh one. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. And is there any signs?
No signs.
No sign.
And we want to remind everybody, we have the training on Thursday, this Thursday, from two to four here in this room. So make sure that's on your list. And then, I wasn't sure, I know I received an email from Bestie Joe that. The planning, or excuse me, city council and the county commissioners are having a joint meeting on Monday at ten o'clock. Or three o'clock. Oh, that's right, three o'clock. Um, here regarding the impact zone. So we won't necessarily part of the meeting, but if anybody wants, I guess we can come. As long as there's not more of us in a forum, correct? Or how would that?
Um, you can attend. Uh, Michelle, do you think that we should post a planning and zoning agenda for Monday?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have a quorum.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, Michelle Grindwell, Community and Economic Development Director. Yeah, so I think if we think uh, we're gonna have a quorum, and just in case, I, I feel like we should probably go ahead and, and post that just to be safe. Um, so the meeting's three to five o'clock in this room. Um, there isn't an opportunity at the meeting for public comment. So it's really a dialogue between the governing boards, but we have asked for public comment in advance that will be distributed to both. City and the county.
Anybody think they're gonna make it? I'm gonna try, but I can't guarantee it. So two, anybody else think they'll be here?
Yeah, you can watch it online.
And that wouldn't count as a quorum, right? I was thinking if there's not any more than here, then you wouldn't have to.
I mean, yeah, you're right. Well, here's Bill. He's got an opinion on it.
Bill, Bill, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, I think if you're gonna attend online, I mean, much the same as this meeting where we have commissioners that attend online. Uh, that would count towards the quorum. I mean, I think that, look, the safe bet is just to notice it, and if we have a quorum, great. If we don't, well then, don't call the meeting.
Okay. We can do that.
You're also allowed to write letters based on your experience. If I didn't put.
And then we have our next.
Is that a public comment or?
Yeah, it would be like a comment to city council or the funding commission as a citizen. You could reflect on your background of service.
Thanks, Michelle. And then how's our April first meeting looking?
April first meeting will have the Akana Storage Facility. It will have that nine oh seven West Lake Street. Design review. Planning agenda.
Isn't he?
You will have the um, long-continued slash re-noticed public hearing for a different. Conditional use permit for a short-term rental with an occupancy greater than ten. You will have. Um. An addition at Roman Farm Brewing. You will have um. Revisitation of the Pilgrim Cove Camp on their campus master plan. Um. That should do it for April.
Except for the Ableful's agenda item in there that you will add.
Oh, I'm gonna take care of it.
Sure, I bring a joke.
Okay, yeah, we'll just.
Can't say anything.
And then today's the deadline for May. Um, I think I've seen like one, two coming. So. First is sitting slow.
All right, very good. During at seven twelve PM. Second, motion and second to adjourn all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Gonna take that for Tony since he wasn't here.
It was an early chance.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to jostle you.